Pleased allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
We will be deviating from this evening's agenda. And the motion to approve the minutes of September 23rd is written.
Seven.
All in favor? And the motion to accept the minutes of September 24th. The personnel matter?
Seven.
All in favor? We do not have an ADA update. Other than we are looking at the doors funeral options. The entry door here, this door, and the this paddy's door. Don't have any numbers or contractors as of yet. Buddy and Cliff were overworked at that 2008. Got four sixty-six eight speed. Eight double L, walk and rear, eighty-four thousand miles, good tires, double frame, real good shape, no leaks. Checking, they'll have to take the noodles off, rear check first. You can use the one that burnt. You can use the body off. It currently has just a sander on the back that's front teeth instead of rear. And we love it, so he's had a real good shift, good shop too, handles well. Yeah?
Good truck. Now it's kicked out. Got no problem with that. To be honest with you, I mean, when that truck runs, first and quick one. Dick, you already got two trucks without that. And I know it's a whole one.
The only thing I'm worried about is that we have, like last year, this last year, we had three trucks down the sink. We had, and lost two guys at the shop, just left them there. There's more than pop cans. Well, not only that, but worst case scenario. Eighty-five hundred bucks. Just the transmission alone. It's fifteen grand, that's on its level, the cost. I get what you're spending for this. I don't want, kind of like that's a good show. Especially if you lose it. About the one time I see the ball with all those, she put it in the dash. So, but that's a big truck. It takes a lot of turn.
No, no, my discuss. Yeah.
And the motion that we purchase this truck from the public works has an improvement account. One seventy, no, one forty-seven change. Yeah, one forty, probably hold that one forty-seven change.
Yeah, that's something, right?
And that's, that's before. That's before this. That was before.
You're up for a plan, I think?
Yeah, yeah. That he did sell. So that is the motion.
Is that accepted?
Now we all in favor? All right. This is, that's what I'll get turned into that. All right, this is one.
Okay, I think, thing to hold myself. Yeah, yeah, I, anyway, support this, I'm saying, I mean, so long star.
I support that.
Just in case it falls out. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Appreciate everybody for coming out. I know you guys received the information in your email, but I wanted to read this in case others didn't see it. Truthfully, I actually found this from the town of Monmouth meeting, and I thought it was very well written, and I thought it was something perhaps a bit huge as well. So I'm just going to read it off. It said, "Request to delay enforcement of new property taxes until 2026." And just let me know if I need to speak louder. Can everybody hear me okay? Somebody speak a little bit louder for you, Tom?
Hey, well, it's not loud enough for me.
Not loud, okay. I don't have a lot of breath today, so I'll do the best that I can. "To the Brownfield Select Board and Town Officials, we respectfully submit this request under the guise of concerns of residents regarding the recent property tax revaluation. We ask that the town of Brownfield delay the enforcement of recent property," I'm sorry, did I say that right? Yeah, "of the newly assessed property tax rate until the 2026 tax year. This temporary postponement would serve several purposes. Fair time for appeal. Many property owners are still in the process of appealing their re-assessments. Allowing the new tax rates to take effect in 2026 provides adequate time for these appeals to be heard and resolved, ensuring the taxpayers are not burdened with potentially incorrect assessments. Financial consideration for residents. The new assessments have resulted in tax increases of two, three, and even four times the previous amounts for some households. Creating residents an additional year offers them the necessary time to plan, budget, and make any financial adjustments without experiencing sudden hardship. Community respect and stability. This delay demonstrates a commitment to supporting and respecting Brownfield community, balancing the town's financial needs with the well-being of its citizens. We believe that deferring the implementation of the new property tax rate until 2026 is a reasonable, compassionate approach that protects residents while maintaining the town's integrity and fairness. Presented for your attention and thoughtful consideration of this request, and I sign it respectfully Cindy Walker and the petition signers of the recent proposed warrant article that we had signed. And when I speak of that, I reference the petition signers because we were pretty much, the people that went out, we were a high combination of people. We were people that don't normally get together and do things, so that was a statement in itself. We gave ourselves two days because we knew we had a short, short timeline to do this in. And I feel like we, I don't know what the total number of signatures were, but I felt we had a pretty good turnout for two days' signatures. I felt if we had a little bit more time, we would have had a lot more signatures come to you to show you just how much the town is concerned about our taxes this year. I want to reference the letter. This was after I had sent this to you to be on the agenda today. So I want to reference the letter that I received from the assessor's office, which ironically was dated September 12th, 2025, and I received in my mailbox October 3rd, 2025. I thought that was kind of concerning that they had this pre-prepared, and I had not received it for several weeks. She mentions, or the assessor's office mentions, that every April, they have the, they have to submit their plan of what they're going to do according to main laws, what they're going to do for their town property valuation. So they chose at that time, in April 2025, two months before our annual town meeting, to tell the state that they were going to go 100% of market value. And this was never communicated to any taxpayer. So before the school vote, before our annual town meeting, no taxpayer was informed that our town property was going to be reassessed from 70% to 100%. Also, according to the main, main assessors guide, I re-looked it up, it has not changed since 1978, we can be between 70 and 110% of market value. And we've always been generally 70% of market value. And taxes and real estate value are two different things. Taxes are generally less than real estate value. You, obviously, when you want to sell your home, you want top dollar. When you pay your taxes, you want low dollar. And generally how it works is, and for us, since we hadn't had a reevaluation for about 20 years, we always knew our, well, we ever didn't ever think about, our town assessment. When we were thinking about our taxes, we were thinking about our mill rate. So when we would go to town meeting, and we would say, oh, okay, our mill rate is either going up or going down, we would say, oh, okay, I'm going to vote on my town warrant, or I'm going to vote on my school taxes, and I'm going to say, okay, I'm thinking of mill rate. I'm going to vote on this, thinking, this is going to raise my mill rate. We're not thinking anything to do with, did the change of my town's evaluation change? We're not thinking anything about that, because it's never been in this town. So it hasn't been discussed, it's never been, we've never been educated on that, so it's never been anything in our head. So I just want to put that out there for our people that didn't know. I also want to say that the select board, I recognize you. I had a selectman in my house for 12 years. It is a hard job. I look at you, I recognize you, I know it is a really hard job. So when people come to you and they have issues, they're not always going to be nice, especially when they're stressed. Money makes them stressed. But I want to tell you, next to our pressure, my true opinion, you are the next position in line, you're the highest ranking of people. You are, you are the assessors of the town. They may call them the assessor, that's their job, but you, all three of you, are the true assessors of the town. You represent the town. And I want to say, in my opinion, our assessors did not take in consideration the majority of our town. When they decided in April to go from 70% of market value to 100% of market value, they did not understand the impact that that financially would have on the people of this town. That's not a reflection of you, unfortunately, but it comes back to you. And I'm just asking, in some, in summary, because I know you've all discussed it, and I gave you that time, that opportunity to discuss, but I wanted to let everybody here understand why it was so important, because I've done some research, and I don't, I don't know if everybody knew, that's why I kind of went above and board, above the letter. My last question was. I wanted to know if the assessors have a current contract? And if not, if we are able to release them from their position, because I don't feel they have the best interest of our town, as many of us are struggling. And we are paying them to have our best interests in mind. And I thank you again.
Hold on, that contract? All right, just two, two comments I'd like to make. The 70% is incorrect. It was 62% that was sent to the state, and the state came back to the assessors and said, I don't know if we can fix this because 70 is a million. Bill Flynn, could I ask you, when the statement was made that we're generally 70% as a assessment value, do you remember Steve Samor coming back to us and showing us that we were 100% several times for assessment?
I don't know about several times, but I think a couple of times I do recall a conversation.
And 100%?
Yeah.
So, yeah. Okay, so the, the letter was sent to the town council. Now, I'll call on him, I'll call him.
Well, no, I want to follow up that.
No, I'm, I'll call on him, just a second.
Because she did tell me it was 70% last year.
Yes, they had me correct, the 62% from the state. She's got it in the binder in her office, and they couldn't, the state came back, says you need to fix it. And that was put in the 100. And the state accepted that 100% valuation. We sent the letter to the assessors, RHR, and the town's attorney. And I have copies up here, some people would like to see. Take your copy for yourself. It's my understanding that the town budget has already been approved by the town meeting and the property taxes, that the rates referenced in the taxpayer's request to delay enforcement of new property taxes until 2026 have already been committed based on that budget. My assumptions are correct, and I do not believe the board of selectmen have the authority to do what is requested by the taxpayer for the reasons specified in my September 18th, 2025 email to Elizabeth regarding the petition warrant article relating to property taxes. Additionally, once taxes are committed, the tax collector is duty bound under main statutes to collect them. See 36 MRS, 760, and 761. So the panel was interested in a, in a copy, that is from the town's attorney. We cannot act on that letter. The assessors, copy of that here as well. There's no provision in law to do, to do this. Assessors are not empowered to do it. Tax collectors are not empowered to reverse what is committed to them. The only provision in law to change valuation after the commitment is the abatement or supplemental procedures on a case-by-case basis. So.
What are the supplemental procedures?
The supplemental, supplement procedures is what the states need. You would have to ask assessors. Abate the cross-session. You want to figure out where to abate your due.
I posted some of those on our Facebook page a couple, maybe a week ago. There's two of them.
I think they're like hardship.
Okay, statute 760, perfection of collections. Municipal assessors or municipal officers in the case of primary assessing area shall specify in the collector's warrant the date on or before which the tax collector shall perfect his collections. Such date shall not be less than one year from the date of the commitment of taxes. In the event that no time is specified in the collector's warrants, tax collector shall perfect their collections within two years after the date of commitment. Minor burdens of amounts not collected. Discharged collector shall identify the unpaid taxes discharged under subsection one of the tax base. Failure action, an action against a tax collector for failure to practice collections, tax collections shall be commenced within six years after the date of such collector's warrant. And that is the two statutes that is being referred to by the town's attorney for 760, 761. So essentially, folks, once the tax commitment is set, statutorily, the town cannot go back and change that commitment. It's not. No petitions, no letters, nothing can change what the tax, once the tax commitment is set. So it is what it is.
Can I ask a question? Was there a time when rebate checks were sent out or when states made by the tax collector?
That I don't know. I can speak from one, one instance, a taxpayer had come in, and, and there was an error, and the tax collector took that amount off of the next six-month bill. They can only go back three years by state statute. It happened in that case, I, but I've not heard of any rebate checks. It was credits.
There was a veterans error sometimes.
Yeah, there were some, I'm not.
Eric signed like.
A long time ago.
A long time ago.
Yeah, a long time ago.
There was a veterans error. He signed a whole bunch of people's.
I, I'm only, I only know of maybe a couple that they, but it wasn't a, they didn't get a check. They got a, a reduction in their next bill. The town didn't cut the check. The town did cut checks for the check debacle that happened three or four years ago. Checks got doubled deposited, but that was, that wasn't a big change in, in tax, so that was a double deposit. Also have the 760s and 761 up here, if anybody wants to come as well. And from the assessors as well. Okay, commitment date July 1, 2025. Contest your assessment on 185 days from the commitment date. Thirty-day notices are filed between eight and 12 months from the commitment date. Miss thirty days from the notice, and foreclosure is eighteen months from lien. 2025 taxes have due on November 15th. Gowns due May 15th of '26. Twenty-four tax liens date 10/15. Twenty-three tax foreclosure date, 3/3/26. 2025 thirty-day tax notice, 6/29/26. Twenty-five tax liens date, 7/29/26. 2024 tax foreclosure date, 4/15/27. And a twenty-five foreclosure date would be 1/29/28. 2025 taxes, 1,655 bills mailed. 20% have been paid, and 50% of those accounts were paid in full. Nope, bill's not due until next month. 20 cents is paid by CoreLogic on the week that taxes are due. Many other tax bills are estrode, we don't have that exact amount. 2024 tax bills, 115 bills unpaid, approximately 145.
145, I see.
145K. Leans issued on 10/15/25. 2023 taxes, 19 bills paid and liens released so far. Thirty-eight tax bills still outstanding around 53K.
Yep.
Eleven bills outstanding are in foreclosure status. The 2023 foreclosure date is 3/3/26. Copy is available as well.
Yes, she's. Okay, so I want to go back to, she knew in April that she had to change, okay, so you're saying, I know firsthand, so I had the conversation with her firsthand last year, that people could go to her at any time and submit their thing, because they were 70%, come at her. So this year, so we must have been below this year at 62% because market value must have changed. It is 62%. She had to make the change. Why did she choose 100% and not 70% or 80%? Knowing that, we're still at April, why was there zero communication to the taxpayers?
About tax.
About, about going to 100% of market value. That's a 30% increase.
I guess what I'm confused on the question is, the notification to the taxpayers.
Notification, okay, when we went through.
Hang on, let me finish. What I'm saying, what the confusion is.
You're a smart man. This is how you usually derail me, Ricky.
Okay, all right. It was a simple question. April is tax commitment time.
Yep.
The assessors, by statute, have to send this paperwork into main revenue service, the certification. Okay? And you're asking why there wasn't notification sent out to the taxpayers?
Even town meeting, couldn't you have known at town meeting?
The question was, the, well, town meeting is in June. The tax commitment is done in, in April. But my question to all of you is, when have you ever been notified?
The year before.
Don't you think we should be?
The year before. So this has never been done before, Ricky?
Oh, so, folks, I just asked a question.
This has never been done before, Ricky. And the year before, we had re-evaluation, and we were notified several times. The communication was fabulous. We all knew it was coming. We kept getting letters. We had public meetings that was well-explained. We had a big fancy slideshow. We knew it was coming. We had our letters that came out, and we were told exactly how much it was going to be. For the most part, I think people took the, took it pretty well that, okay, our property went up, our taxes are going up, but this came totally out of the blue. And it wasn't like, okay, my property went up 100 bucks. No, my property went up hundreds of dollars. And I think Brian even said his went up a lot more than that.
I don't know, thousands of dollars.
Thousands of dollars. So we're not talking a little bit of money. So when you come back at me, I know you're a smart man, I'm giving you a compliment there, Ricky, so I know you're a smart man when I say, if she knew in April that she was going to go from 70, or if you call it 62, I know she told me 70. If she went from 70% and she knew she was going to give us a 30% increase, there should have been a communication that said, think about this, folks, when you're going into your school budget meeting and your town meeting, when you vote on things, that your property taxes, the home, your home is going to go up 30%.
Well, I think that's unfair to blanket everybody with a 30% increase. And, and I'll give you my example. My property value and my tax bill, I want up 200 dollars.
Wow.
Okay, so.
For you, so.
Hold it, hold, hold on, hold on. So I think it's unfair that you're stating, you're blanking everybody when I put 30%.
Well, you're, what, you're the first person I've heard to say that.
Well, I believe they live over on Palmberg, over on the old dump. They're dropped. They're, they'll drop, over on Dusty Lane. They're, they're, they're going to be dropped as well. But to, to blanket statement that it's 30%, everybody experienced a 30% increase is incorrect.
Here again, you're saying, thinking of the majority of the town. I was very clear in saying, having the interest of the majority of the town. Whereas I'm thinking you're not in the majority of the town right now, because frankly, I ask, was yours only a $200 increase?
Mine?
Yeah.
Mine was three, I'm sorry, I thought you was talking to Ricky.
No, I'm talking to you, Frank.
This last year went up $300.
Okay. So you're still lucky, but.
Well, evaluation's pretty long, you know what I mean? I've got a sixteen by twenty-four house. It's not like a big mansion.
Well, no, my, my son's wasn't either. His went up about eight hundred. Mine went up eight hundred.
What about the year before?
Well, he, I can't compare my sons. My, mine, actually, I was fine with because I was like, okay, that's fair. Mine is fair, it went up, but I considered, okay, fine, we haven't had an evaluation for twenty years. I'm okay. My son, he can't take that into consideration because of, because of building his house. So it went up a little bit over time, so I can't use his. And it, it up two years in a row. But it went up two years in a row.
Mine, mine did too, just, just make sure you understand.
Mine went up two years in a row.
I, I think that's what I'm saying, is that everybody's, no, because everybody, a majority of the towns went up two years in a row. The first year, we were all well informed. The second year was, um, the majority was a much bigger increase and it was blindsided. And you didn't have time to prepare for that blind side.
Well, in response to the, to the, uh, notification of April commitment, I will add that as a medium in and of itself. As soon as the assessors have a commitment, before they send it on to the state for commitment, for sort of is verified through the state as it's statutorily required, I have no problems with that moving, none whatsoever. That way there's, everybody's on the same.
I, I, I personally vote that we get a different assessor because I don't think many people around here that have them as assessors are very happy with them.
I agree with you.
So I have a few things that I want to, I want to bring up. First of all, when, when we're talking about a revale, we're talking about a townwide revale. When we're trying to keep a to, the town at a hundred percent, it should be the townwide assessment, right? You change as things, you, you reassess as things change. I have a property over on Perry Mountain Road that has not been livable since, I don't know, 2013 maybe. Somehow, that property went up 350 bucks or so. Went from somewhere around 450 to 700-ish this year. So how my property that's not even livable, that I haven't even been over there, increased by $300 is a little bit confusing to me. Um, other than the fact that we raised it thirty percent, right? So we can play on words or we can get to the bottom of it, which is, revales happen every incrementally so that everybody's brought up to whatever the fair market value is. Now it's a matter of maintaining those records and keeping it up to par. But if there hasn't been a change or a neighbor's, or a neighboring sale, I'm not clear on how that happened. The second thing that I wanted to say was, in the beginning, when you talked about Steve Stanborn, a couple of times we're at a hundred percent of market value. I'd like to know what impact that had and what the, what the fair market value was at that time. Was that before COVID hit and our rates went through the roof?
Well, before COVID hit.
So my point is, my point is, it probably had less impact then because the market wasn't as volatile back at that time, if that was several years ago.
Okay, the point to that was, it was, we're historically at seventy percent was the statement. And that's no, we had.
Periods where it was at a hundred.
We, we did have.
But the point that I'm making, the point I'm trying to make is that we're in a very volatile market. So, so we have people that are paying what was a hundred thousand dollars three years ago, four years ago, five years ago, they're paying 300,000 for now. So the impact is gonna be greater on the individual, right? And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up is, I still haven't received my letter. I had to read it online. I still don't have it. And, but when I did read it, I was a little annoyed with the fact that our assessing department at a time like now where people are clearly upset and confused, didn't want to be unfair by having a public hearing that people might not be able to get to. That reeks to me. I'm hiding under, I'm crawling under a rock and I don't want to have to deal with it. I won't meet with the individual taxpayer because they have to go do all their work, become an attorney of their own, become an assessor of their own, to be able to appeal any kind of a decision. Rather than being open and willing to serve the public and teach the public what the public needs to understand so that we can be more comfortable with the, uh, fairness of the assessor. That's where, I, I have a huge issue with that. Like, you are here to serve the public. And all I hear are line and this meeting, now in letters, it's, we don't want to serve the public. I have a problem with that, so I'll say it down.
I disagree with you, CJ. We do have public hearings. Nobody comes. You weren't at the last one.
I've been to many of them.
I'm telling you, you weren't at the last one.
That's right, I tried to.
You're a huge book.
I'm not a book.
The meeting, stop. The meeting will be in order. You can speak in a regular tone or you can leave. Does everybody understand?
Yes. Public hearings are announced. What's the point there? Excuse me? What's your point, if you can go?
I asked a question. Chip, yep, I'll get to you, Tom. Chad.
I'm hearing that they say they want to replace the assessors. But isn't it, if I remember in the past, way back, in a couple of seconds, I mean, aren't there only so many assessors in the state of Maine? And they're all like booked solid?
It's a, uh, it's, it's quite the to-do to be, uh, certified for assessing. It is, it is no joke. We went through Steve Stanborn, when he left, we had Jesse Winters. And we have one year statutorily to have somebody certified to be an assessor for the town. Jesse didn't do it. Megan Witt stepped up. And again, we talked to the state and they allow a big year timeframe. Very difficult. It's, it's no joke. There's one class that is three days long in Augusta and the test is no joke. But there are several tests that go with it. Megan was, she's like, this is no joke. This is some seriously hard stuff. Assessors like auditors, it's a niche market. You can look around, it, it, it's hard to fill. Very niche.
People aren't going into the field either. They're.
So, so. Yes.
Well, I, for the record, my taxes went up 2,500 and I, I, I did pay. Problem is, Rick's good at pointing out one thing. And that's if you gotta have, gotta have some kind of vision. How did we get here? That's the problem. The problem is, the town, all the towns around us have a lower mill rate than we do. Raymond, Dasko, uh. Look, where the cost where he is, Naples. And the reason is because this town hasn't grown. The outside world is squeezing this town like all the rest. We don't have a tax base and we don't even have a minimum standard for housing in this town. So until we can come up with a minimum standard for housing so that everyone at least pays some of the taxes in the town instead of half of us paying three quarters of them, then that school budget is killing us and we don't get a vote on the school budget. The framework school system, uh, doesn't fit the needs of our children. It's totally incompetent. It's designed to send kids to college. I would bet that seventy percent of the kids that come out of that school this year are not destined for college. The program doesn't fit them. It's a waste of time and a waste of our taxpaying money. The question is, how do we grow the tax base in this town? Because it's beans please, because the town of Brownfield hasn't grown in, what, fifty, sixty, seventy years compared to the towns around it. And unless you grow the tax base, outside pressures from the school, operating costs of the town just keep squeezing us and will tax us out of the town. So how do we change that is the question.
Well, I can say if I was a business owner, I wouldn't want to come to the town of Brownfield to start a business. Not after watching these meetings, absolutely not.
I wouldn't buy a house here either because the town is not gonna grow in the next twenty years or next ten years. And the taxes in this town are gonna have to double to keep up with the expenses. That's a fact.
Yes, sir.
Two questions. Did they notify you there would be a thirty percent increase? Did they notify, does police notify the public?
Well, I knew that it was 100% valuation that was certified by main revenue service. Yes.
Do you have to sign off on that or is that I'm all on the sensors?
That's tax collecting.
You have to agree to it?
That's tax collecting, correct.
And the auditors have, the auditors, the assessors have to fall within a certain margin to get us the most revenue from, from the state. So if you look at your property card and you look at your homestead exemption, you can see all those fluctuations. So when you see we're only getting 19,000 for your homestead exemption, that was a year that we might have been at 70. Now the full exemption is 25,000 and they want to assure that we get all of the exemptions that we can from the state.
So what if we had said, this letter has said thirty percent increase, that's just gonna hurt a lot of people?
We can't, we can't do that. No, that is 100% illegal for us to tell the assessors to assess at a lower level. No, absolutely not. We cannot do that.
Okay, my other question was, what's the difference between the public hearings and informational hearings?
An informational meeting is, we're just doing a, a meeting to give to the taxpayers. And a public hearing is statutorily required.
But what, what's the actual difference between the two? Besides that it's statutorily required?
Public hearing, uh, most, not all, but most public hearings, when we do a public hearing, the document or ballot or whatever we're gonna be going to vote on, there are no changes at the public hearing. The informational, we can make changes, input from the taxpayers, hey, you know, this is wrong or this needs to be corrected or could you fit, you know, change this, um, we do that. But once we go to a public hearing, um, and it, it comes down to time constraint because ten days prior to a vote, public hearing. So if we don't have, we would have to, if, if we did a public hearing, twenty days prior to a vote, that gives us our ten-day window if, if there's any change to that document. The public hearing that we had, uh, last week, last week, before last, last week, the next day, the absentee ballots were available. So there was no, and due to the, the time constraints with the informations and then, because we, we're trying to get the information out to everybody, you know, and, and we did a Saturday meeting, we did a, a Wednesday meeting and then the public hearing, statutorily, we had to do that public hearing, so.
Okay, so. So I'm saying this nicely.
Saying how is it?
Well, no, I don't want you to interpret it as being negative. So. As the town, as the town office, you knew that the property values were going up to 100% prior to the supplement warrant?
I knew that we had 100% valuation.
Okay.
Yep.
So. I know for the past two decades that we have not had real numbers, that we have not had completed audits for two decades. I want to know the real reason why the historical warrant article that's normally in there to offset the warrant art was not in the town.
I'm gonna answer that and I've answered it publicly before.
But those were the two reasons you gave.
No, incorrect. We spoke, now, hang on, let me answer.
And I was at the, wait, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish.
The auditor.
I know, it is, I sat at the auditor, I was at that meeting. I just want to say for the record, for people saying you need to be in meetings, I was at the meeting with Ron. He said we were in good standing. Spend the money. Okay?
Yep. So, Mr. Flynn, nine years on the board. Did we or did we not, every single year when we were creating the warrant, reach out to RHR Smith, Ron Smith himself, and ask him if we had X amount of dollars to offset tax rate?
We did and I would usually trip as I was going by the treasurer's office on my way to ask that.
Every year, every year, religiously, okay? We don't know the numbers. I'm not the accountant. So Lynn and I asked Ron Smith, RHR Smith, do we have a number to do that article? Don't do it this year. At the time that we were putting the, uh, warrant together to go to print, second week of April, we didn't even have the draft 24 on it. So we're two years behind right there. The auditor, with the amount of mess that they were dealing with financially, and it still is. They don't think it's over, folks, because it's not. Twenty-five, uh, Ms. Boyle got the, they requested checklist information sent to them today. Mr. Navy, as a matter of fact. And Ron Smith said, don't do it this year, let the dust settle. Quote unquote. So we did not. Because the finances, and if you look at the 24 audit.
Which I haven't seen.
Well, it's, we haven't, we finally got, last week, we got the final. We finally got the final last week. So. The management letter is fraught with repeat finding of things that weren't done, monies that weren't put where they were supposed to be, budgets that weren't recorded correctly. Monies were pulled out of this, this department for this other department. Oh, the, the capital improvement funds. Those weren't dispersed like they were supposed to be. Five years, folks. Five years, the capital improvement money that was in the warrant was not dispersed per the vote for five years. They had to find it. So. We did what we historically do. We went to RHR Smith and asked. And they said, look, let the dust settle. Let us get the finances squared away and we'll visit next year. By the time, again, dependent upon the referendum, November 4th, on whether we're going referendum or open town meeting, um, vote next month. I, I hope, I mean, it's October, I, I hope that we have the 25 audit completed before we have to go to print.
So you knew we were going at 100%, you knew we didn't have the numbers. You knew that we weren't going to offset the warrant article, but you didn't think it would be a good idea to let us know when you were asking us for raises and tooting everybody's horn at the beginning of the town meeting? You didn't think it would be appropriate to say, hey, guys, we're in a little bit of a situation. We want to be open and clear. You had time to, to save your money to pay your $200 increase. I didn't have time to pay my 700 or a thousand dollar or whatever increase that is.
Well, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're up to speed on my finances.
You just sent the 200 bucks.
I'm glad you know what's in my checkbook.
So here's the thing. If you want participation, you might want to rein your, your committees in a little bit, your chairs and your committees, rein them in so they can treat people with respect. Is what I hear. I happen to know about somebody that resigned from a committee recently because their opinion. I happen to know about somebody that resigned from a committee recently because their opinion was not considered or given, wasn't given the option to, to make an opinion. And I don't know the details behind that, but I can tell you right now, it'll be a cold day in hell before I join any kind of committee under the current status, because you know what, the same people. I'm going to go through it, I'm going to do a spreadsheet, and I'm going to see how many people sit on the same committee, how many committees each person sits on. Now you ask for involvement. Here's the thing, no one's going to step in to a group of people that already have their, their plans laid out, that are ridiculed because they don't know or because they can't go to a meeting. I don't work for the town, I live in the town, you all get paid. It's your responsibility to make sure that we know what's going on.
Yes, sir. Yes, the, the, the white haired fellow. No offense.
No, don't take it.
I'm getting it, slow.
Couple of points I'd like to make, one was I met with the assessor after our recent evaluation. And while I feel sorry for everybody here, mine went up four thousand dollars. It's gone up a thousand dollars a year since we built the house, and then this year went up four thousand dollars. So I met with the assessor, and one of the questions I asked her is, okay, well, what happens if the market crashes? Do, does things get reevaluated and do our taxes go down? And she told me that was up in the selectmen, but you're telling me that that's not something that could fall.
The taxes, okay, I, I think you're taking that at context. The valuation, if there is a change in the market and the market values go down, okay? So your assessment should go down, one hundred percent. When it comes to the taxes, county, school, and town budget, okay? County doubles this year, school went up this year, town, not, we weren't that much off of last year. So what you're going to see is, we still have to have the same amount of money. Your valuation, your valuation is going to go down if the markets go down. But you're going to see a change in the mill rate. Because we still have to spend the same amount of money. You still have to, statutory requirements, the lights, insurance, employees, all that, it's, it's the same. So you're just going to see a change of whether it's mill rate or valuation.
Right, one's going up, one's going down.
Yeah, that's all you're going to see, it's the same amount of money.
The other part I'd like to make is that I was at one of the meetings where we voted on pay raises. And at that meeting, the subject of taxes came up because people were concerned about, you know, raises go up, the taxes go up. And at that meeting, the only thing that was mentioned, and this apparently was, was already known that we were going to get bumped up to a hundred percent of valuation. And the only thing that was mentioned was that the mill rate was going down, which made it sound like, well, B, you know, we can afford to give everybody raises because now our taxes are going down.
I want, I want to answer that, and I've been asked by a few taxpayers, well. For the first time in over thirty years, and I asked a couple of old timers in the town that have been here their entire lives, at town meeting, if we ever had the ability to tell the taxpayers right, pretty close, what the mill rate would be if everything passed in the warrant. And they looked at me like I had three heads, no, we never found out the mill rate until October, November. Oh, okay. And Mr. Flynn back then, nine years on the board, can attest to that. We used to get three choices to make to set mill rate, then it went after two, and then it was, this is what you get. We're getting free, will be assessors. The, the mill rate, we've never been able to do that. Ever. Because we didn't have the numbers. Whenever any question was asked about, well, how much is in that account? Well, last year's audit said, and, and, and just a general number that was always asked, what's in the general fund? The answer that always came from the table would be, last year's audit said one point seven nothing, okay? That was last year's numbers, folks, completely irrelevant. We had income, we had, you know, revenue share, we had excise tax, we had a bunch of things that would go into and all over into general funds. So, yeah. So I simply stated, we had numbers and with, if everything passed in the, in the warrant, yes, we could actually give you a mill rate, which has never happened in this town. Yes.
I don't think it was the mill rate that, it was not being notified. I mean, we're voting on increase in pay and all this money, and if we all knew that we were being assessed at a hundred percent, I mean, that would tell me intelligently that my taxes are going up, I, no matter what the mill rate was.
Well, like I, I stated earlier, the only thing I can do from this point is have an April tax commitment meeting in the community center, and taxpayers can show up, they'll be walked through the, what is going to be going to main revenue service for certification. And then you're going to know. You would know that. We go referendum or open town meeting, regardless, the town meeting vote would still happen in June, I believe it's June ninth. So that, you would have that two months prior to, well, actually, a month, month and change. There's absentee ballots, if we go referendum, they have to be available later on, so thirty days prior.
Quick, Neil, so if we were at seventy percent, would now, mill rate have been higher because regardless of how you slice it, mill rate ratio.
I just forgot.
There's three things we have to pay for, we have to pay for the school, we have to pay for county, and we have to pay for our budget. So it's just a matter of the formula, yeah, it's still been the same, this goes up, this goes down, this goes down, this goes up.
Right.
So I don't think you would have really seen a difference because you had a lower value, you would have looked and said, oh, my house was only worth a hundred thousand. Oh, but the mill rate's twenty dollars over fifty cents, you know, so would have, I don't think you would have seen much difference, the fact is what the budget was.
Well, no, we would have, because if Ricky would have said, if everything in this warrant passes, our expected mill rate would be twenty dollars, then we would have all sat there and said, hmm, do we need this? Do we not? But he said, didn't say anything about our, our properties being evaluated at a higher value. He just said, what we'd always known, nothing, we didn't give our property values any thought, because we never knew anything different. Because we always went on what the mill rate, we always went by mill rate, it's going up, it's going down. Okay, that, that's how we based our hope. That's what we knew, it's what we've been educated to think, and that's what we went by.
There's no change, there's no change.
So that's what we went by.
There's, there's no change, you know, your mill rate is reflective on your valuation, it's, it's.
But we didn't know that, Ricky.
You don't know that.
We didn't know that.
Hell, I didn't even know.
But you're saying you did know.
I didn't know there was a hundred percent valuation, yes, that was what the certification come back from main revenue service. I don't know what kind of impact that would have on each individual's property, I don't know what you guys own. I have no idea what you, what you have, some of you I do, but I don't know what your homes are worth. So to, to, to sit there and say that, I, I, I knew that your, that your, you know, property was going to drop.
Well, no, Ricky, that's not what I'm saying.
That isn't correct, I, I didn't know that.
Ricky, what's hap, that's not what I'm saying, Ricky, what I'm saying is, you knew it was going up from potentially seventy percent to a hundred percent. So a majority of the town is going to be affected thirty percent. And you have to take that into account, that you knew that the town would be, would be affected in some way other than just the mill rate. The only thing we knew is the only thing we've ever been educated on, and that's the mill rate, because we've never faced anything else.
Well, I practiced in, I assassinated in, about two years in a row, you know.
Right.
This is the first sentence I've ever had, I.
Well, to, to be, to be fair, I mean, honestly, to be fair, twenty-two years, we went about, we went.
Exactly, this is all the tour.
That is a fault on the town, you can blame me.
I'm not blaming you, Ricky.
Have a good rest, please. I was on the board, this is my, it's the start of my eleventh year. So yes, I am responsible to at least that, that the town didn't have its revow at even its, you know, fifteen year mark, okay? You can blame me for that. As far as knowing what each individual's house is worth or the market values or any of that, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't drive around looking at your house and say, oh, wow, that's a whole lot of thought, I have no idea, I don't care. I don't care what you're doing, that's your business. If you want to hold somebody accountable for not notifying you properly, for not educating you, blame me, one hundred percent.
I'm not blaming you, Ricky, I'm saying that the assessors knew in April, that should have been brought to you,
When it comes down to it, Mrs. Walker.
and that should have been brought to the taxpayers because that is something totally new. I'm not trying to blame people, I'm trying to fix something, I'm trying to fix something totally broken because there are many people in this town that are broken, you just heard his man's taxes went up, four thousand people, my heart is broken. My heart's broken for him.
You want somebody held accountable?
I don't, I want to fix this.
What about your committee?
Yeah.
What else, and what else, what else do you folks want me to do? I just, I've already, I've already set up.
Something, something.
Show a little compassion.
Ma'am, I can't, I can't.
Oh, mine only went up two hundred dollars, that's really.
How is it, what do you want me to do?
At least understand how we're feeling.
I do, I do.
Say the word, say I'm sorry that you feel this way.
I, I, no, I'm not sorry that you feel that way, I am not sorry you feel that way. I can't break main statute and say, hey, let's get everybody.
That is not, forget the laws, be a human being.
I have to follow the laws.
One, something, but not the other.
I get you, Ellen. I'm the most condescending, demeaning, disrespectful man I've ever met. When Sidney was speaking to you, you never even lifted your eyes to look at her with respect.
Yep.
Yep, 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 that's all he has to say.
Yes, ma'am, sure is.
Let's hope so.
Yep. It amazes me, folks. I try to accept accountability, I try to say, look, I'll set a meeting for this for, before the, the main revenue service has given that valuation for certification. I, 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 what else do you want me to do to communicate, I, I, what do you want me to do? I can't, the tax commitment was done, I can't fix these tax bills right now, there's nothing that I can do about it.
Start demanding some respect from your staff, that might go along.
Excuse me?
Start with demanding some respect from your staff.
I don't understand that.
When the town hall staff has, or not the town hall, the town in general, the town staff in general is constantly instigating and being demeaning and disrespectful all over the place, whether online, whether face to face, or whatever, it sheds negative light on the leadership. If you want businesses to come into town, the leadership needs to provide some kind, some level of professionalism, right? That's where it starts, that's, you need to regroup, back up, demand some respect, have a staff meeting, discuss what you expect in terms of ethics and responsibility, and if they can't follow it, get them out and get somebody in here that you could, that we can trust. Because that's what it all boils down to, is a lack of trust.
BJ, we should come back and listen to this. My, my.
Absolutely.
I'm Charlie Egan, and I have to say I resent the sweeping statements being made about the town staff was disrespectful. I have never found anybody who's a member of this town staff to be disrespectful. I've been, I'm not finished yet, BJ.
I am.
Yeah.
The other statement made about committees needing to be reined in and, you know, they're paid by the town or some such statement. The only people I have experienced working on committees are people who have raised their hand to say, I'd be happy to help. They don't get paid, there are no benefits they get, they're there to help out, they give up their time, they work very hard on all aspects of what's going on in town. None of them need to do that, they have plenty of other things they could be doing with their time. A lot of the committees have been working on getting grants so that the town doesn't have to pay for various things, but can still have those improvements. So I resent that kind of comment. I don't know how we got off on committees, but I resent that because I think it's a slap in the face to all the people working on committees who have worked very hard. And I think it's a slap in the face to our town staff to suggest for one moment that they needed talking to about being respectful. I have never once come into this office with this new team of people where I felt any sense of disrespect for one second. I come in and they're smiling, they're helpful, they're respectful, so that's a comment that I really resent, and I think people need to hear that.
Ms. Walker.
I'm Holly Hazard, I live in Brownfield and. So I'm not a sound like a parent, I'm caring. I agree, I mean, I have never had any issue with anybody either from this office or public works or the transfer station. I mean, everybody's been super helpful and respectful and, and really trying very hard to serve the public. And also, like, I, this is my first time on a committee in this town. And, I mean, I know the people that, that work and give of their time and effort and their, their passion and brain power to try to make things better in this town. And I respect and admire all those people that serve, so I just want to say that.
Deb.
I agree with Holly and Terry. The staff in the town office now is outstanding, it's a business, it's being run like a business. It should be a business. Previous administration or the previous, whatever you want to call it, real bad. But what we have now, Beth, Lynn, Michelle, Patty, you can't ask for better. You can't. That's my opinion.
Tom. Yes, sir.
I, I, one question, how do we get the vote on the school budget back to the town of Brownfield? We need a vote on that separate, as a town.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that has to be petitioned.
Huh?
That has to be petitioned to the school.
So with a petition, we couldn't do that and bring it back to the town?
It used to be that way.
Each, each community, each community in District Seventy-two needs to submit a petition with whatever that number, one hundred twenty-five, or how many voted for the governor the last time? But each town. Then that is discussed, I believe, at the school board level in those individual towns. And then all of them are supposed to get together and vote to go back to the individual meetings.
So one town can't do it?
One town, no, you, and, and I'm.
Different district.
I have tried, I researched this probably going back five or six years. And there are some folks, and I'll be blunt, in the town of Fryburg who will jump up the pitchforks as soon as you say what you're saying.
Well, good, I'll come bring it up again next year.
How did, how did it get to Fryburg?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
How did it get to Fryburg?
People voted for it.
What do you mean, how did it get to Fryburg?
I, what was, I don't understand what you're saying, how did it?
My point is, the town of Brownfield should be able to vote down increases in the school budget in the town of Fryburg. We don't get to vote on that, the whole thing is done, it's one vote.
No, that's, that's not true. That's not true. Everyone in Brownfield has the opportunity to vote on the school budget.
Right, and we're up number ten to one.
We, we vote. We, we vote on one budget because we're one district. If you had voting in every separate town, and something passed in one town and not in another, but mentioned in one town and not in the other, how would you justify that as far as?
You can't justify the money they're spending now.
I'm sorry.
I don't want to justify it, I want to cut it, it's a waste of money.
Well, then show, show me work again.
I do, as, as the meeting's budget meeting, and as long as the town of Fryburg can milk us all dry, all the towns around us, the, the program isn't going to change a breath in Fryburg.
Ms. Tillsen.
But we're paying for it.
How can we fix this problem?
Which problem? Ma'am, we got a lot of them.
Well, what do we all do to make things better?
Vote.
Ricky, that's a start.
Deb.
Just, just so that everybody gets a, a real picture of this school stuff, and voting, and budgets, whatever. I served on the Board of Selectmen for several years. Each of the years that I was on the school, on the Board of Selectmen, I went to the meeting in Fryburg at the Molly Off School. And there was another gentleman that would come with me, I believe, sometimes his wife would be with us as well. And Michelle and another clerk would be there, checking off names of the voters from Brownfield who would show up for this meeting. And I would say to Michelle, how many from Brownfield? And she'd say, the three of you. That's who would show up, two or three people from Brownfield showed up. But then you come to a meeting like this, and you got eighteen or twenty people, oh, you, you can't spend that, and go to the meeting and vote.
Right.
I mentioned it, but I didn't.
Deb.
Um, may I address Cindy Walker? Cindy, your husband Eric has been a selectman in this town.
Yes, he has.
And you talk about the selectmen were educating you about the assessments in the milbury? Have, have you talked to your husband about that? Has he seen how? How it all plays out? I mean, I don't know how it all plays out, but I know when I worked for a selectman.
I think I've just explained that, that we have never done it in this particular situation before.
I understand that, I understand that, but Eric sat on that.
If he just, if he's a year.
And he doesn't know how it works? I don't know.
I, I think what, Eric's one of the reasons why he doesn't come here and he brought that one.
Oh, really?
Oh, okay.
Ricky needs to come to me and talk to me.
Okay, all right, yeah, there's another hand up. Chad.
Kind of off the subject, not really. But BJ made a comment that someone resigned from a committee. I had two people resign from my committee. Why? Because they weren't doing what the select board asked the truck committee to do. One never even started when we first meeting, we said you had to sign the paperwork and this and that, so you could be on the committee. As soon as he found out that we couldn't look at used trucks, because that's what we were designated not to do, nothing older than 2023, he didn't want to be on the board. The second person who resigned from the truck committee resigned the day before we went everything, when presented it to you guys at open town meeting, on what the truck represented and what the employee represented. So he resigned one day before all the information went out to you guys. Go. Well. Go.
Well, I think that's made in the, 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 I think, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I, I want to clarify again, I think I started my presentation with saying that I think the selectman had an extremely hard job. And I appreciate what you do. I think I explained that this has never been something that happens in this town before. Think I was kind of clear about that. I was, I have presented things as ways to try to help the majority of the town, because I feel like a majority of the town are really struggling. And I have a hard time because I feel sorry for the majority of this town that look at that bill and wonder how they're going to scrape up enough money to pay for their bill. I've heard that they can make a payment plan, which is great. It's a, it's an option, I've seen the, and I share it all, the things that they can sign up for to try to get help with their taxes. There are options for them. I just feel sorry for the people, because it just puts them behind, it's like offering somebody a credit card, here, have a credit card, you can pay it off, but then you get your next tax bill, and you're still paying for your last tax bill. And I just feel like it's a, a it's not putting the people of this town first, and I just feel bad for them, it's not saying, in turn, I've done a good job, I'm just trying to offer suggestions on things that maybe could help them, I'm not trying to be a pain, I'm trying to offer ways that maybe could help, I, I'm not and I find that comment from Deb so disrespectful that my husband didn't talk some sense into me before coming to me.
Stop, stop, oh. Vote, if I could change the tax bill, I would. Stat's poorly, not a law. There's nothing that I can do about it, I don't make the laws.
I know.
We know that, Ricky, we know that.
You can be, you can be damn sure that if we grow them, that'd be a problem too.
We know that.
All right, maybe you have, your hand up, yeah? All right, we'll move in. Okay, bit analysis for the community center, thank you, Mr. Eaton, you have, you have done outstanding with this. We met with the spitter today, which is Kyle Feenland. I had a good conversation with him. I make a motion to notice of award to the contractor to the construction. All fair?
And Rick, that's to put the metal roof on?
Yeah, that's for the roof of the community center, and this is all the enterprise grant. The roof of the community center and the boiler room door, two hour fire resistant, with some cool stuff. Like, well, just trying, and they put this stuff next to it, supposed to save them all, supposed to be earlier, so. Yes, but this is for the, the first enterprise grant that was, that we, we think, um, we should do.
I don't suppose you have any say as to how they fasten it, I mean, that's totally left up.
Oh, no, there's, there's, there's specific ways they have to do that.
Are they gonna do it on the high spots or the low spots, do you know the answer to that?
No idea. Can't, what?
In the last ten years longer on the high spots.
It'll be, it'll be per the manufacturer's recommendations, and it's everlasting, Richard.
Yeah, so if they do it on the low spots, you'll get about twenty years' service for you to have to replace all the screws.
Oh, uh, no, they actually got a, a screw that has a forty-year warranty.
Wow.
Yeah, typical, uh.
Washer.
In today.
Well, the washer's. Washer's forty years.
Yeah, yeah, they said this typical ten-year, you have to replace them. Uh, but, well, that's for forty years, so hopefully, we're in good shape with the new roof.
We'll all make the forty years from check.
I'll ask you to check it by then.
Just one year ago.
So he's looking at you, oh, yeah, okay.
Deb, what's your next move?
Forty years on screws.
Certified, when people visit, have the, the, the. This, the public hearing for this will be, uh, next week's Selective Meeting, when we open the meeting, and we will. No, I just put it out there, uh, really, it's just the, uh, just the end of. Yeah, but it's, it's, this is a C ordinance, so don't, and anybody ask any questions, we'll, we'll. Uh, as an honor, Rex Center side, and I, I'm. Terrible son of a three, uh, Brownfield. And then I, I'm at Brownfield Family Playground.
Brownfield Family Playground, perfect, okay.
Uh, we'll make a motion to five hundred dollars for the sign for the playground, playground.
Can I ask you a question? Can we put a sign up that says Dunn Memorial Park?
That's for this side.
Oh, can we put one up there?
Yeah, I actually, when we, with, when we took this sign down out here, the, you know, manual one, I had made sure Public Works took it down and stole it, so that we could refurb it, uh, to put over here. In cursory discussions with the Select Board, Lynn, Garden Committee, a couple of them are here, uh, putting it out front here, Dunn Memorial Park and Gardens. So, but I, I made sure we saved that, so that we didn't have to, they invent a wheel, and we can refurb it, make it nice, and put it out here. The Dunn Memorial Park is kind of shaped like an L, it's sponsored the world with it.
Yeah.
So, the other side is not par, uh, parvally.
I just, I always thought there was a plaque there, and then I went and looked, and there's no, there's no plaque there.
There's a big duck that's engraved, but it's kind of milled over, so you can't really.
Isn't it? I didn't see it.
At the tennis courts, the corner of the tennis courts, where people can get water, like the.
I always thought there was, but I love.
Yes, it needs to be washed up, polished.
Sounds like a jumper.
Awesome, I get a job for you.
So, um, most of all, taking for five hundred for the Brownfield Playground sign, uh, of.
Playground.
Yeah. All fair? Perfect. Uh, we got an estimate of, uh, version of two material hardwoods, decked doors, hinges, barrel pins, and hardwood, hardwood shelves, calling finish, uh, eleven fifty, that's a.
Yeah, we saw, I was like, um, the planning board saw too.
Oh, we got half?
Yeah, yeah.
Sweet.
It's not Brownfield Family, so you're on the Brownfield Family Park.
Okay.
Just wanted to say, sorry, right?
Whatever the name of it is.
It's Park.
You're good to go.
Okay.
Uh, eleven fifty, that's for both of those?
Like the ones, yes.
Uh, uh, that's right. I make a motion to have Matthew Man to be a two-door, or one. We already did the, the sound, but, so, that's, we get that, okay?
No, the, it was twenty-nine hundred for the materials, but then now, he's giving you estimate through the window.
Oh, yeah, okay, I make the, uh, the price of another, uh, the, uh, community center maintenance. For twenty-seven hundred, fix the door, uh, the wall, the windows, and the door. And that kind of stuff, uh, Jeff, anything?
Uh, I'd suggest you table that, because of what we talked about with the louver and the window. Uh, the twenty-nine hundred was, I think, just to replace everything that's there, put the louver back, and he's looking into putting a full louver in.
Full one?
Yeah, so, and, and Jeff said he would, you know, get in touch with him and get something to the Select Board right away.
Motion's had received.
That was just, um, yeah, I didn't know if there was any other buildings or any other place that needed to be LED or anything.
Paul, Paul Parks is on the LED.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I think he's.
So now, we can't have LED in the gym. Yeah, and then, so, yeah, we're looking at a different, uh, pump, so, I sense a thing in that.
Right, okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure, because they were running a program, and I didn't know if I should look into it or not, like, I couldn't.
This, this town is providing general assistance, this is from the state, uh, Department of Human Services. Uh, we disperse one eighty-six fifty-six, or received, one eighty-six fifty-six, uh, nine twenty-one.
So you, do they need something?
Oh, yeah, Brian, your buddy. Oh, yeah.
Uh, communication form. You play? It's already been, uh, forwarded, uh, assessment. The assessors have that, and that's what about that is the. We got a donation receipt from Honor Flight, name, uh, for a thousand bucks. All right, upcoming events, uh, we'll go over for the planning board meeting at seven, uh, seven P M Wednesday, uh, school board meeting in Molly Off, Thursday, four P M Communications Committee. Monday, town hall is closed and observance of the Colorado State.
I keep thinking it's gotta be that, I was telling you.
Okay. Anyone from here?
No, I'm good.
You?
I'm all set.
Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
Playground looks like so much fun, are adults allowed to use it?
I actually thought it'd be great to have an adult party there.
There you go.
Adult's over.
Good in sports.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Make a motion to return?
Say it.
All fair? Thank you, folks, have a good evening.